Performance report for the 2014-2015 school year. It is March 31st, 2016, and it is now 6:00 PM. Call this meeting to order. Mr. Dicky Gonzalez.
President.
Mr. Dr. Norberto Cantú.
President.
Mr. Eduardo Ramírez.
President.
Mr. Benito Sainz.
President.
And myself, Daniel García, are present as well. And we do have a quorum. Item B, PIMS Financial Standard Reports. Elsa.
Can I take this over there or not?
Sure, yes ma'am.
So I can see because I might not be able to see.
Thank you.
Board members, Mr. Trigo, Board President. I'm here to present the annual taper, which is the annual performance report for 2014 and 2015. A lot of the information might sound repetitive because you've probably already heard it, but by law, we have to make the information available to the public. So you have copies of the PowerPoint, and I also provided copies of the entire report for you at your desk. Let me get closer so that I could see. Basically, this is the law that entails that we have to report the information. Texas Code 39.053 requires that every year, the district board of trustees gather and publish the annual report that includes the following information: The PIMS Financial Standard Report, the taper reports, the campus performance objectives, the report of violent or criminal incidences within our district. We also have to report student enrollment, academic performance information, of course, that falls under Texas Code 51.403. As per law, we have to have a public hearing. We have to publish that we are going to have a public hearing. It was published in the town crier for two weeks in a row. It was also published in our school website and our webpage, our Facebook page. The status of the district and campus were released by TA on November 19th. Today's presentation will meet the public hearing requirement of having taken place within the 90 workdays. It might not have been, but we had to reschedule the meeting for other reasons, so that's allowed. Additional, there was a public notice placed in the newspaper, as well as in the town crier and website, like I mentioned. The complete report will be posted on the webpage within two weeks after this public hearing. All report documents will also be posted on the website. The taper report, executive summary, in 2009, the legislature passed House Bill 3 mandating the creation of a new accountability system, which is the one that we have in place now. Because of the implementation of the new accountability system, TA revised the previously produced performance report title. I don't know if you all remember the AEIS report, and it is now renamed and called the Texas Academic Performance Report, or as we refer to it, the taper. This is basic information about our district, our enrollment by grade level. I'm not going to go through every single grade level, but we have a total of 10,875 students as of the end of the year last year. Of those students, the ethnic distribution is 98.1 Hispanic, 1.7 white, and then, of course, .2 Asian. Then the subgroups are there listed for you. The Texas Academic Taper also requires that we publish the district profile, which is our staff information. Our staff information says we have 1,943 staff members. Professional staff are 966. Teachers are 779. Professional support, 130. Campus administration, 44. Central office, 12. Educational aides, 123. And auxiliary staff, 853. Also, in this report, we are to publish the teachers by highest degree held. We have teachers no degrees, bachelor's degrees, master's degree, doctorate degree, and then teachers by years of experience. Beginning teachers, 24. 1-5, 118. 6-10 years of experience, 236. 11-20, which is the bulk of our teachers, have, 259 teachers have 11 to 20 years of experience. Then we have teachers with over 20 years of experience, 142 staff members. The PIMS Financial Standard Report, this is taken straight out of the website. Based on the district's total revenue for 2014-2015, it was $119,161,416, which equals about $11,038 per student. A copy of the revenues is also available on that link that's there. And the way that it breaks down, or where we got these numbers from, are the 2014-15 actual financial data. So these numbers come straight out of TA and straight out of that report. And that's the way we report that particular information. The taper report, again, the executive summary, what it includes. This is the performance index for the performance index, as far as the index one, index two for accountability. The new accountability system has four indexes, and they are student achievement, number one, student progress, number two, closing the performance gap is number three, and post-secondary readiness is number four. And they make up the whole accountability system in the state of Texas. And that's basically how it is compiled. It goes into the subgroups. It looks at closing the performance gaps. And there's a short video, but I'm not going to go through that. And just so that you know, this is something that's done for all public schools, any charter school, any school that's getting public funding. The taper report is available on the website. It includes, along with the campus performance rating reports, these reports are posted on the TA website and can be accessed using the link below. So they're public reports, they're not confidential. Anybody can access these reports. The taper performance rating for the RGC CISD and its campuses are included in this report. The ratings and accountability data table are available on the website. All campuses, as well as the district, were met, were rated met standards, and a complete listing of the summary of accountability ratings and distinctions is listed in this report and will be published on the school website. This is an example of the district accountability for 2015. That's the one-page summary. And it says there that, of course, we all met standard, all, the district, as well as the campus. Here are the taper performance ratings by campus, and it gives you the distinctions that they met. Depending on the number of stars, we had one campus, which was Rio Grande City High School last year, that you're aware, earns their seven possible distinctions, and they earned all seven, something that had never been done before. And it's very difficult to do because you've got to make sure that not only are you performing well, but are you showing growth? And then if you're showing growth, are you also doing post-secondary? So we had one campus that got seven distinctions, and that was Rio Grande City High School in the direction of Mr. Peña, who was there last year. Campus performance objectives, under Texas Education Code 11.253, we require that each campus improvement plan sets objectives based on the taper report and periodically measure progress towards the performance objectives. The objectives must be approved by the local board of trustees and must be made available to the public. And basically, it's just saying that your campus plan has to revolve around your performance and how you're doing in your, in your score. So if there's something reflective, or there's a weakness in your scores, that should be reflected in your campus report, in your campus, campus improvement report. The 2014 campus performance objectives for RGC are all included in the report. The taper performance rating safeguards, it just means at the bottom of every summary for every campus, there's something called the state system safeguards, and that is that information that's there. And basically, I just summarized it for the district, and I've listed every campus here, and the percentage of their performance rates, their participation rates, and everybody, of course, in the participation rate has 100, except Rio Grande City High School had an 89. And then the graduation rates, that only applies to the, to the two high schools. Early College did not get a graduation rate because it was their first year in existence last year. And then it gives you the graduation rate at the end. And then the performance rates are the first column, as far as the system safeguards are concerned. The school report card, this is a one-page summary that every school gets. Parents should be receiving copies of the school report card. They're available online already. If you go to the district website, you click on the, on the school report cards, they're also available. We will be providing copies, but we had to do the public hearing before we could provide those copies. But those are already available on the website. That's an example of what the school report card looks like. I've also included those in your binder, at the end of the binder. It's like usually sometimes a two-page, three-page, even a four-page summary of how that school fared, as far as every single indicator that's discussed here. The campus performance objectives require that each campus improvement plan sets objectives based on the taper report, and they periodically measure progress towards the performance objectives. The objectives must be approved by the board of trustees and must be available to the public. The district performance objectives are there. Basically, what I've listed here is I've listed how the state did, how the region did, and then how we fared. And if you look at most areas across the board by grade level, this is a summary of our district. You look at the state, we're pretty close to the state, pretty close to the region. In some areas, we're a little above, and some we're a little below, but there's not one that's like drastically below what the state or what the region is performing. It lists by grade level where there is, where you see, not reported, last year, all the elementary 3-8 math scores were not required for accountability because it was the first year of the new TEACs, so those are not included, and that information was not reported there. The student success initiative, this also only includes reading because last year, we were able to omit our math since it was the new TEACs. So in reading, it shows you how the state did, how the region did, and then how we did as a campus. Keep in mind, I put listed there the initial, which is the first time they tested, and then the composite, once they took it, the first and the second time, we got a cumulative average, so we listed both numbers there. The report on criminal incidences and student safety, by law, we are required, under state statute, to publish a report on violent or criminal incidences in our schools. This report should be available for use and review by the public. According to the statute, the annual report must include a statement of the number, rates, and type of violent or criminal incidences that occurred on each district campus, to the extent permitted under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act of 1974. B, information concerning school violence prevention and violence intervention policies and procedures that the district is using to protect students. And then C, the findings, the findings that result from evaluations conducted under the Safe and Drug Free Schools and Communities Act. And basically, this is taken out of our PIMS information. We worked together with Mr. Álvarez to get this report together. In 2015, we had 4,010 incidences, but that doesn't mean that we had 4,000 kids that had an incident involving, it could be student code of conduct. It means that we had 4,000 incidences. So one kid might have had 20 referrals, or one kid might have had 10 referrals. So that doesn't necessarily mean that we had 4,000 students. We just had 4,000 different incidences. And they range anywhere from being out of uniform to maybe excessive absences. They're just referrals. And then of those, we had 103 criminal and violent incidences that occurred in 2014-2015, resulting in disciplinary placement, meaning that they went to the alternative center. We had 96 mandatory DAEP placements, one mandatory expulsion, 132 discretionary DAEP placements, and then four discretionary expulsions. And when we looked at the numbers, Mr. Álvarez and I, we were looking at all the numbers, all the numbers went down from last year significantly. So when we were comparing, we're like, oh, look, we went down here, we went down here. So all the numbers went down as far as the incidences and the number of placements at the alternative center. The state statute requires that every district include their performance report, including the Texas Education Code, the Rio Grande City Status, the most recent report on the Texas Public High School graduates enrolled in Texas higher education. Learning is found on this report and can be accessed on the web using the following link. And this is basically information that's provided to us by the state, meaning that in 2014, it's always two years behind. So in 2014, the number of graduates, it gives you the state, the region, and the district. And if you look at our numbers, most of our numbers are a little bit higher than the, than the state or the region. Like the state has an 89 graduation rate, we have a 94. Region one has an 87. Received GED, we don't have a GED program in our school. The GED program that's offered is offered outside through region one, so we don't get any credit for that. If we had our own program, then of course, we would have a number there. Continued high school, meaning how many kids that didn't graduate come back, then dropped out. If you look at our dropout rate, it's significantly lower than the state and the region. Graduates in GED and GEDR, ours is the same because we don't have any GED graduates. And then grads, GED, and continuing ed, like I said, all of our numbers are above what the, the region and the state has, as far as our graduation rates are concerned. If you look at the recommended and DAP graduates, it's the same thing. You have the state, the region, and the district, and you look at our numbers, and they're usually a little bit higher. We have kids that enroll in dual credit. If you look at the state, they're at a 53, we're at a 50. Region one is at a 57. College-ready graduates, 54, 46, and 45. And what that's based on is how many kids are passing two subjects of their TSI. And I know that we're working on that. I know from 2014 to now, I know we've improved because we're doing a lot more remediation and preparation for TSI, so I can see these numbers probably going up. Also, in the average for the SAT score, the average is there, and we went up from last year to this year. And then the average for the ACT is also there. And then, of course, graduates in Texas that enrolled is, if you look at that number there, it has a 56. That's a number that's not very accurate because it's only tracked based on the fact, if a student enrolls in the college and says that they were part of Rio Grande City High School, then we get credit. But if they don't say they graduated from here, or they don't provide that information to the Department of Higher Ed, then we don't always get credit. So that's kind of hard to track. Are there any questions or any concerns?
Any questions from the board?
That's it, thank you.
Is there any public comments from the audience? All right, the public hearing, it is now 6:17. The public hearing is now adjourned. We still have some time between the next, to the regular scheduled board meetings till 6:30. Board meeting for March, it is March 31st, 2016. It is now 6:30. Determination if there's a quorum. Mr. Dicky Gonzalez.
President.
Dr. Norberto Cantú.
President.
Mr. Eduardo Ramírez.
President.
Mr. Benito Sainz.
President.
And myself, Daniel García, are present as well. We do have a quorum. Now, Ms. Solís was, did text me that she was feeling ill and was not going to be here today, and I believe Mr. Klein has a illness in the family as well, a family member's not doing well, so we hope further, we hope they recover soon. Section two, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
I would like to ask you not to say yet, please, and join us in a moment of silence in memory of our colleagues, Onaida Valeras Garza and Lourdes Elizondo, our Lord, our merciful Lord, receive them in your holy abode. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Section three, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting for February 23rd, 2016. Do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramírez. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Section four, public forum. Section five, item one, recognitions of Rio Grande City High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Board Members. Mr. Trigo. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask a special group of young ladies to please come to the front and stand over here as we get recognized. This year, it gives me great pleasure to announce our Lady Rattler basketball team. They were representing our district as one of the teams that advanced to the state playoffs, and we believe it's the first time in Rio Grande City history that we came out with a bi-district championship. Let's give these big, these ladies a great big hand. Coach Vai, will you come over here, tell me, give the certificates, please? We're going to call and recognize these players with a warrant and a certificate. We have Ms. Josie Amaya. Adriana Cruz. Gina Villarreal. Jackie García. Andrea Barron. Yamillet Garza. Samantha Lopez. Marla Garza. Cyan Delion. Brittany Benavides. Ashley Bassan. Nope. They would show up to the games, though. Victoria Valenciana. A very special member of our team, our team manager, Bailey Vella. Also, I have some special recognition for some of our players. We have all district honorable mention, Adriana Barron, Andrea Barron, I'm sorry. All district second team, Jackie García. All district first team, Gina Villarreal. Co-defensive player of the year, Adriana Cruz. Adriana Cruz was also selected to the rgvsports.com, RGV Viper All-Star Showcase. She did not participate because she's presently also running track, okay? She was also selected to the RGV Coaches Association All Valley Honorable Mention. We have with us a sophomore, 20th grader, Josie Amaya, 31-58, co-offensive player of the year. Selected to the rgvsports.com, RGV Vipers All-Star Showcase. She was unable to participate because she was actually playing the last few games with a broken hand. So she's nursing an injury. She was also the Monitor's All Area First Team Member. Said to RGV Coaches Association All Valley Team First Team. She was second in the Valley with 19 points per game and fifth in the Valley with 11.2 rebounds per game. We have two more great years with this. So want to recognize these, these girls, give them a big hand. Want to recognize our coaches. We have our head coach, Gustavo Valenciana. Assistant coaches, Omar Trevino. Iram López. Midaya Echavarria. And Edgar Marukin. We'd like to ask the parents of these young ladies to please stand and be recognized along with them. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Ladies, I think, want to get some pictures for the board?
Yes.
Sure.
I'm going to do it from this end. Sorry if I'm in your way. We also have one more recognition. Board members, we want, want to recognize our students from our band that were selected to the All-State Band, okay? So I'm going to ask that those students and their band directors, please come over here to the front. Okay, we, we're going to recognize 10 students today. And that's important, that number 10, because never in the history of Rio Grande City have we had 10 students make the All-State Band in one year. So we're very, very proud of these kids. And there were 26 kids in total from our region that made the All-State, and 38 percent, Mr. Benito Sainz, your math, were from Rio Grande City. So that is, that is a great, great job. Okay, there are over 64,000 students initially entered the All-State competition. Of those 64,000, about 1,600 qualify. 10 of them were from Rio, okay? All-state performances are held at the TMEA Clinic Convention, February the 10th or 13th. 26,000 people from Texas and beyond will attend over 315 workshops, 100 performances, and visit over 1,300 exhibit booths at the nation's largest music educators convention. Okay, so here we go with our members of our band. All-State Band and Orchestra in San Antonio, they compete in February the 13th at the Henry Beig Wonsades Convention Center. And we have Mr. Alexis Sainz, he's a second-year All-State, plays the flute. He is... He's a student of Ms. Lizeth Alanis. His parents are Mr. and Mrs. Adrian and Consuelo Sainz, okay? Congratulations, sir. We have Mrs. Lizbeth Barrera, four-year state, All-State member. She is a horn student, I think it's a French horn, and she's a student of Mr. Rudy Barrera. Her parents are Mr. and Mrs. Rudy Andorra Barrera. We have Ms. Sarayi Sanchez, a trumpet student of Mr. Guillermo de la Cruz. Her parents are Mr. Oscar Sanchez and Ms. Roxanne Rodriguez. We have Mr. Christopher Cavazos, a trumpet student of Mr. Guillermo de la Cruz. His parents are Mr. and Mrs. Reynaldo and Ana Cavazos. We have Ms. Josie Lynn Chapa, a trombone student of Mr. Alberto Diaz. Her parents are Mr. and Mrs. Jose Luis and Siomara Chapa. We have Mr. Carlos García, a trombone student of Mr. Alberto Diaz. He's a big boy.
He doesn't have problems.
No. His parents are Mr. and Mrs. Jose and Mireya García. We have Mr. Anthony Gonzalez, a second-year All-State student. He plays the euphonium, and he's a student of Mr. Orlando Herrera, and his parents are Mr. Josué Alanis. Oh, Orlando Herrera and Jose Alanis. His parents are Mr. and Mrs. Jerry and Gracie Gonzalez. Sorry, wait, we got double coaches for some of these students. We're going to have Mr. Emmanuel López, he's also a second-year All-State student. Plays the euphonium. He's a student of Mr. Josué Alanis and Orlando Herrera, and his parents are Clarice Centeno. Is that correct? Good. We have Mr. Ricardo Gonzalez, a tuba student of Mr. Raymond Alanis. His parents are Mr. Ricky and Paz Gonzalez. And finally, we have Mr. Armando Peña, a two-year All-State student. Who plays the tuba, and his teacher is Mr. Raymond Alanis, and his parents are Ms. Marta Peña. Let's give these kids a big hand, please, and their directors. We'd like to ask the parents to please stand and be recognized. We're going to have Mr. Barrera say a limited amount of words.
Very limited, if you could indulge me. I want to thank our school board for their awesome support. I want to thank Mr. Olivares, who goes unsung because he does all the paperwork and all the, the requisitions and all that. That helps a great deal. The parental support is awesome. The administrative support is fantastic. Mr. Trigo and his support is unbelievable. I do want to say, because this is a great source of pride for me, that if you combine all the school, schools in the PSCA School District, Edinburgh CISD School District, La Jolla School Districts, McAllen School Districts, Mission School Districts, Sherryland School Districts, Valley View and Hidalgo, if you combine all the All-Staters from those schools, our, Rio Grande City had more All-Staters than all those schools combined. I just wanted to let you know. And I just wanted to let you know. Thank you all very much. Thank you very much.
a few words on behalf of the board.
If you could just come back briefly, for a few minutes at most, a few seconds. I just wanted to say that I think I speak on behalf of the board, it's been a fantastic year, it seems, in band and in sports and everything else that I can think of. Every school board we've had, we've had some group recognized. And you need to see it from our side. You know, we were giving the thanks and Mr. Trigo was giving the thanks, but quite honestly, we're here to serve you all. And it's so rewarding to see the things that we're seeing and the things that you all are accomplishing. And I think the students, you all need to be proud of it, so I'm glad that you're being recognized. We're used to being sports, for those that were involved in UIA or sports, we know how much time, the dedication and the passion, the work it takes. And coaches, your assistant coaches and equipment managers, you name it, your work does not go unnoticed. And we also know that it's additional hours, countless hours, that you probably not recognize for, given credit for, so don't think that we don't see it, and the rewards speak for themselves. As far as the parents are concerned, you all give yourself a pat on the back. It takes, I couldn't, my parents did it for me, and you know why, I thank them, and I wish I could do it every day now. It's awesome to see on this site. Your kids should be proud, you all should be proud. And again, it's been one fantastic year, so I just wanted to say, on behalf of the board, congratulations, you all deserve it, don't thank us, you all deserve all the recognition.
Now, we understand that you all are welcome to stay, but we understand if you all have to leave. And thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Item two, consider and take possible action on the travel request form, request from Magnet Middle School, Veterans Middle School, and Rio Grande City High School. Have any discussion on item two? Do we have a motion, item two?
I saw movement, Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Cantu, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action on requests from Team Rio Basketball of Rio Grande City for use of school facilities for practice and games.
Attached, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo Superintendent of Schools, ladies and gentlemen. Attaches a request from Mr. Tacha Jones for the use of Veterans Middle School and Rio High School gyms for Team Rio Basketball practice and games from the March 15th date through September. The administration is recommending approval. This is just recurring, we do it every time.
Do we have a motion, item three?
Just a question, they're already using it? Start date is in March 15th?
I believe so, Mr. Sines, simply because we have rescheduled our board meetings for the circumstance.
Just remind him, just remind him to bring him a bit earlier, because I mean, I'm all for it, but just to, so we want to prove it after the fact.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Resio, and they're fully covered?
Their liability, they're insured, they're listed, this is something that routinely turned into a before that they set premise on the premise, that they take action.
Who's gonna, like, close the facilities and clean the facilities after they?
We have custodial, sir, custodial.
So, that's our part?
Yes, sir.
Motion, item three?
A move, we approve item three as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sines, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on requests from City of Rio Grande City for use of school facilities for 2016 basketball leagues.
Attached, again, is a request from the City of Rio Grande City for the use of the Ramiro Viejas Gym and the Ace Elementary Gym for the 2016 Basketball League, starting, again, the 23rd, same scenario here, through May the 12th. Custodial services will be charged for the use of gym. These are both Fort Ringo gyms, and we recommend approval.
Do we have a motion, item four?
So moved, Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible actions on donations to RGCC ISD.
The following donations have been received by the district.
Yeah, we do have the list, just for the, if we can just send a thank you letter to each individual or agency that donated, Mr. Resio.
We will, sir.
Appreciate it.
We recommend approval.
We have a motion, item five, we have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on Stark County Appraisal District revised and amended payment schedule for 2015-2016.
The Stark County Appraisal District total allocation for the 15-16 is 484, 287, 86. Installments are 121, 071, 97 for each quarter, due December, March, June through September. The payment schedule is based on 16 budget appraisal district and the tax levy for the Rio Grande City CISD. The schedule has been revised, and you have the information there, and amended from 121 to 1, I'm gonna use an approximation here, 123. And the reason was that there was some error omission on behalf of, I think, I believe it was San Isidro. And we were notified with ample time, and they made the adjustment and modified the schedule and the quarter amounts. So, the administration recommends approval of the County Stark County Appraisal District payment schedule.
Do we have a motion on item six?
So move, item six as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sines, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on agreement for tax collection services between Rio Grande City CISD and Limebarger, Gogan Blair and Sampson, LOB.
We have a representative, Mr. Gus Martinez from Limebarger. Mr. Martinez?
Good evening, Board, Board President, honorable trustees, that's correct. If allowed, we would renew our recent contract for the same terms, and we can come back next month and give a year-to-date report if the board likes.
Do we have a discussion?
We thank you for the opportunity.
We have a motion on item seven?
Tell move.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on tax refund for the month of February 2016.
Presented, presented the request for approval for the tax refunds for February. Refund totals are $2,729.17. Attached is a summary of the refunds. The administration recommends approval for the amount on tax refunds.
We have a...
So move, Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sines, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on requisitions 5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate. Thank you, Mr. Resio.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, and ladies and gentlemen. We do have requisitions over 5,000 in a 12-month aggregate for your consideration. If I, I'd like to make one correction on page, page 78 of your agenda for Region One Education Service Center. The total should be $37,547.36. And I'll also hand it out an addendum to the board and Mr. Trigo, and we'd like for you to consider these requisitions to be approved also. There's proper funding in all the requisitions being presented.
Any discussion, item nine?
Mr. Smith, I think just for explanation purposes, that increase was because they wanted us to commit to six months or?
Well, yeah, on that particular requisition, 261-197.
Yes, sir.
Instead of having to come to the board every month, every couple of months, we wanted to bring it all at once, and that was the total amount. The total amount on that particular requisition was $28,160.52, so that brought a total to $37,547.36.
That's right, sir. Put it on the record.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Certainly.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion, item nine?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 10, consider and take possible action on the following bids, commercial carpet, vinyl tile, plumbing supplies, electrical supplies, janitorial supplies, construction materials, concrete, promotional printed products catalog bid.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Bid numbers 16-23, dash 23, 24, 26, 27, 28, and 29. Recommendation from the, from the school district is to reject these bids because the majority of the submissions were lacking in some paperwork, signatures, and other things, so it's recommended to reject those and then rebid. And what we want to do is call all these vendors in and have training for them, what we expect to be, to have a complete bid packet. And then on bid number 16-25, we do recommend, recommend approval for that bid for concrete. And 16-30 promotional printed products catalog bid, our recommendation is to approve the catalogs that were submitted by various vendors.
For those that are being rejected, the rebidding will be done pretty soon?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we could, we could advertise, probably in two weeks, because I'd probably like to call a meeting next week to do some training and then advertise the following week.
Perfect. I just wanted to have any kind of a fake...
Yes, and we might even advertise next week and in between do the training.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any more discussion, item 10? We have a motion, item 10?
So move, Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on TASB update 103 localized policies. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, Superintendent. On item 11, this is a recommended local updates to our policies. Just for the record, this was presented at the February board meeting. We have a debriefing at the superintendent's office, and we felt that the need to be corrected on the agenda for the public to be a little clearer. So, this, this item was represented to the board today, was presented to personnel and policy in February. Administration recommends approval.
Any discussion, item 11? We have a motion, item 11?
I saw movement, Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 12, consider and take possible action on TASB update 104 localized policies.
Yes, sir, on item 12, update 104, this was also presented to Policy Committee, Personnel Committee. These are the updates, the newest updates from the state. As you see on the agenda and your passouts, these are the local recommendations we're making. Administration recommends approval.
We have a motion on the item...
I saw movement, Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on TASB update 103 localized policies. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, Superintendent. On item 11, this is a recommended local updates to our policies. Just for the record, this was presented at the February board meeting. We have a debriefing at the superintendent's office, and we felt that the need to be corrected on the agenda for the public to be a little clearer. So, this, this item was represented to the board today, was presented to personnel and policy in February. Administration recommends approval.
Any discussion, item 11? We have a motion, item 11?
I saw movement, Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 12, consider and take possible action on TASB update 104 localized policies.
Yes, sir, on item 12, update 104, this was also presented to Policy Committee, Personnel Committee. These are the updates, the newest updates from the state. As you see on the agenda and your passouts, these are the local recommendations we're making. Administration recommends approval.
We have a motion on the item...
I saw movement, Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Simeon. Item 13, consider and take possible action on Mastery Education Measuring Up Series.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Trigo, ladies and gentlemen. We come before you this evening to request permission to purchase Mastery Education. This is a rigorous, high-quality content program to support our students and teachers as they prepare for a star in the language arts and in the science area. And this is for grades first through ninth grade. We do, as presented at the committee, recommend approval for this. The cost is for $16,400, and it is from Fund 270.
Do we have any discussion on item 13? We have a motion, item 13?
I saw movement, Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sines, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 14, consider and take possible action on 2016 kindergarten and first-grade math curriculum, end-of-year overview, service contract and license agreement.
Yes, sir, we also come before you to purchase this agreement for training for this year, to be implemented this year, and it is for kindergarten and first-grade teachers across the school district, and it is to improve the student performance in mathematics. It'll require one-day training for teachers, and the implementation, like we say, is this year, and it is, the total cost for this training is $3,000, and it is also coming from Fund 270. And as presented at the committee meeting, we recommend approval.
Do we have any discussion, item 14?
I think it's important to know that there's 36 teachers.
Yes, sir, per grade level.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Just a real quick question, on the $3,000, that doesn't include the, that's just for the training, right?
The training and the curriculum for the last two, six weeks this year, sir. We found about this program, you know, kind of late this year, and, you know, based on the needs of the campuses, Mr. Trigo and I were visiting the stat developments from second-grade math teachers, and they were talking to us that, you know, there was a highly need in the lower grades and kinder in first grade to find a program, and we went ahead and researched it and found a program for them. We brought them to give them an overview, they really liked the program, so based on their recommendation, we provided, you know, this program to them. So based on their recommendation, we provided, you know, this program to them. And now they are recommending for us to go ahead and look into it for next year.
I think one of the things that we discussed in that curriculum meeting was to find a way to kind of assess its effectiveness.
Yes, sir.
See if it's actually doing what it's supposed, what it's supposed to be doing. It'd be good, keep track of it.
Yes, sir. It has an assessment component, so we'll be picking up that data at the end of the school year from the principals and evaluate it.
Perfect.
Is there enough time? Or is this for next year or for this?
No, this is this year, sir.
Okay.
It's an eight-week program.
Eight-week?
Yes, sir. What we did is when we contacted the company, we didn't want to wait. We wanted to make sure that our kinder students leave this year knowing the basic skills that the consultant recommends that, you know, they are prepared for first grade. Same thing from first grade to second grade. So they developed a curriculum just for us for these eight weeks on the core elements that are needed, the skills that are needed in order for them to leave this grade level and go into the next.
Any more discussion? Item fourteen? We have a motion?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item fifteen. Consider and take possible action on commitment letter between Paralyzed Mathematics Consulting L C and Rugan City C I S D for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
Yes, sir. This is the same program, sir. And when the teachers went through the program and went through the training, they're recommending that we look into it for next year. And the reason we want to bring it this early in time is because we want the, the company to release their scope and sequences for next year. So that we start summer curriculum June first. We have the documents so teachers can start to align it and be ready for day one next year. So we're not gonna pay for it. They just need a, a license agreement at this time so that we can be released the scope and sequence documents. And also we'll be the first ones to schedule the trainings next year. So we'll get the dates that we really need for them.
Any discussion? Item fifteen?
Just a comment. I want to say, I know Mr. Penya has been in, in charge of the curriculum department for a very short time and he's already making a positive impact by looking at overall what's happening in the district and presenting these for that purpose to, to get, go, move forward with the curriculum department. And I applaud you for that, Mr. Penya.
Exactly right.
Thank you, sir.
You've done a great job.
Yes. I, I move its approval of this.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Penya. Item sixteen. Consider and take possible action on twenty sixteen summer curriculum writing project.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Superintendent of Schools, Board members, community members. As preparation begins for another school year for next year, we, as presented at the curriculum committee meeting, we are also getting ready to revise our scope and sequence, our concept timelines and our common assessments for next year. We did present it at the committee and the total cost for this particular project for the summer is three hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Funding is available through Title One, Title Three, Fund Two Fifty-Five and Fund Two Seventy. All funds and fringe benefits for our teachers have been allocated. The funding is available. We are looking at three different proposals that are attached in your packets. There is one for pre-kindre and kindergarten. It's initial proposal for early childhood interactive learning centers as presented at the committee meeting. We also have the proposal for our elementary schools, our middle schools and our high schools. Again, it does include supplies and materials, fringe benefits and a total of twenty-eight teachers for elementary, forty-five for the middle schools and fifteen for the high schools. And again, it's sixteen days, seven and a half hours a day for a total of sixteen days. We recommend approval as presented to the committee.
When was the last time we had curriculum writing in the summer?
Two thousand eleven, the summer of two thousand and eleven.
And I, I, again, I want to make a comment with, with regards to this. It's been about five years since we've had this and I, I had the, the opportunity to visit with them when they were doing the planning and I, I was really, really impressed with Mrs. Smithly, yeah, Dr. Trevino and Mrs. McKee because they did all the planning and organizing for this, the implementing, that they're gonna work on that. They're putting together a workable finished product, they're disseminating the plan to all campuses, which is ongoing, supervising the implementation, they're gonna be in charge, evaluating the updates, their program. And then it starts all over again and it, it required a lot of work. And I, again, from my part, I want to commend you all because you're doing an excellent job with putting it all together. And it's been five years since we've had this and this is something that needs to be updated regularly.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Trevino, just for the public to know, how are you gonna go about choosing who gets in?
Yes, you were at the committee.
Yes.
What we're gonna do is go through the application process. All teachers will, they've already undergone, they've undergone some training through the Kilgo training a couple of weeks ago and they've been ongoing, going through ongoing trainings this particular semester. So we will allow those teachers to apply and with recommendation through, with the principals, they will recommend who they feel should be hired and then from there we will look at the applications and we will come to a consensus and we will go through the whole application process.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any more discussion? Item sixteen? Do we have a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trigo. Item seventeen. Consider and take possible action on letter of support for Twenty First Century Community Learning Centers. Grant application cycle nine, year one.
Mr. President, members of the board. We just applied and, or delivered a grant that was, it was delivered on, on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth because of the, of the unfortunate circumstances that we, we've gone through. It had gone through committee and it was, the, the one change was made. That's why, why there was a, an amendment to it. It was one word that, that was changed. And I thank you for, for signing this because this letter meant five, five priority points given to the, given to the application. As lo- if we would have your support to be able to, to support the efforts of the district to be able to continue it after the three years if we are funded. So I thank you. The, the proposal that we made, if it is funded, it's for four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. It will afford elementary centers for enrichment at five different elementary schools in the highest need areas. The, the key factor on this is the high, the highest economically disadvantaged areas. And we look forward to being able to hopefully be able to, it's a highly competitive grant. So we look forward to having it funded if, if we do.
If we do, do you know when it's gonna be, will be notified?
We would begin it next, we'll be getting notified by mid-July to be able to get started August first.
And we've had it before, right? We've gotten it before?
Not this one. This is-
Not the Twenty First Century?
No, we've gotten, the Twenty First Century first started, I wrote the Twenty First Century original one, the federal grant many years ago. That was, oh my God, it was like twenty years, no, not twenty years ago, maybe about sixteen years ago. But since then we had cycle two that was also funded and then cycle eight is which is, which we have now. And that's on the last year, so we don't know if we're gonna get funded again. Cycle eight had only for middle school and, and second, middle and high schools. So this is the first time that we would have elementary through, under the auspices of the state. Because the federal, you know, when there was a shift in, in politics, basically the Twenty First Century federal grants were, were channeled to, through, to the states. And so that's how, you know, we're having to now follow T E A's rules and regs for it.
I saw for this will be for elementary schools?
It would be elementary schools.
Of, of the amount, four hundred and eleven thousand?
Four, four hundred and eleven thousand, yes.
Any more discussion?
And this is in addition to the tutoring programs that we have. So this is an enrichment program that has, that is separate and apart and it has to open up to, to, to our families and, and offering literacy programs and, and a lot of information.
We have a motion on item seventeen?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dono. Item eighteen. Consider and take possible action on Odyssey Work computer licenses for Gruia High School migrant students.
Yes, sir. We come before you again. We would like to purchase fifteen more licenses for, for Odyssey Work for Gruia High School. They do have a population of one hundred and seventy-two migrants, so it has increased and they are in need of requesting these fifteen licenses. We do have funding for it, sir, and it is ten thousand and five dollars. We respectfully request and submit for board approval.
We have any discussion? Item eighteen? Do we have a motion on item eighteen?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item nineteen? Thank you, Mr. Penya. Consider and take possible action on request to use school facilities from Dr. Babino to host the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen prom for eighth and twelfth grade special education students.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, Board President, Board members, Mr. Trigo, Superintendent of Schools and all that are present. Special Ed Department is seeking the permission to go ahead and join Dr. B in promoting a prom or hailing a prom here at the M B C on April the, the thirtieth. And this will go ahead and, if approved, will go ahead and work with R D C C I S departments and her pediatric center to make this event possible. She will take care of all funding. She also helps with the itinerary for students if needed.
Discussion, item nineteen? Do we have a motion, item nineteen?
Some move.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty. Consider and take possible action on request from Special Education Department to use Fort Ringo Parade Grounds to host a fun day for special education students on April twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen.
Special Ed Department is seeking your approval for a fun day. Every year we join different forces. This year we're taking turns with Dr. Stanley. Last year was Dr. B. We join them in providing a fun day and activities for our children. They take care of all funding. All we do is incorporate efforts with our different departments and we also are asking to go ahead and have it at our pavilion, which is our parade grounds across from Parental and the old Ringo Elementary, which is Chance to Be. And this would be on April the twenty-eighth if possible.
Any discussion, item twenty?
Just an, an observation. Ms. Bassan, I, I remember a few years back, this, the Rugan City High School Student Council used to have a Christmas party for special ed at the high school and it was always a, a great opportunity for the kids to mingle with each other. And the, the student council members would each get a gift for one particular student. It was always a fun opportunity. And then there was a, some kind of a, like a field service day and for kids, for special ed kid. And we would allow some of the student council members and, and other volunteers, because it was on a Saturday, to get community service hours for the students. And I know that, I don't know if we have other opportunities for students. Since this is a field service day, is it gonna be all-day activity?
Yes, sir. Mostly the morning because usually the afternoon start getting a little warm for our unit children. So we normally have it in the morning. But I'll go ahead, if that's what you all would like, I'll go ahead and-
I just think it's an opportunity for kids to have opportunities for community service. Now, of course, is, this is gonna be during the school day, right?
Yes, sir. That's, it will be during the school day.
Okay, well, I don't know if, if it's possible to have that as an opportunity, but it's something to consider anyway.
We will consider it.
Something we could look into, Mrs. Bassan.
Okay.
Do we have a motion, item twenty?
I saw move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-one? Consider and take possible action on request for one-year extension to existing contracts of Dr. Ramiro Ramirez, Ph.D.
Yes, sir. Special Ed Department is seeking the approval of one-year extension to the existing contract and the R F P number sixteen oh eight for Dr. Ramirez, our psychologist for our students in special ed.
I have a discussion, item twenty-one? We have a motion on item twenty-one?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-two. Consider and take possible action. Our request for one-year extension to existing contract of A B C Therapy Services.
Yes, sir. Our Special Ed Department is seeking the approval of one-year extension to the contract for A B C Therapy, which is physical therapy services for our special ed students. That is R F P sixteen oh nine.
We have a discussion, item twenty-two?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-three. Consider and take possible action on request for a one-year extension to existing contract of P and G Therapy Services.
Special Ed Department is seeking the extension of the existing contract with P and G Therapy Services. They provide occupational services for special ed students. That is R F P number fifteen dash oh six.
We have a motion on item twenty-three? We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-four. Consider and take possible action on request for a one-year extension to existing contract of Ruth and Cardosa, L S S P.
Yes, sir. Special Ed Department is seeking the approval of the, of an extension for Ruth Cardosa. She's our licensed specialist school psychologist for special ed students, R F P number sixteen ten.
We have a motion on item twenty-four?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Bassan. Item twenty-five. Consider and take possible action on Power School Premier Application License.
Good evening, members of board, Mr. President, Mr. Trigo, members of the audience. Data processing is present here before each night, so that we can ask for the renewal of our application license for Power School. This is the main program that we use to submit all our state reports. So it is a budgeted item in the amount of fifty-four thousand dollars, seven hundred, fifty-four thousand seven hundred and two fifty. Okay, we were asking for a renewal of our licensing.
And discussion, item twenty-five? Do we have a motion on item twenty-five?
Some move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-six. Consider and take possible action on Pearson Power School.
This is the part of Power School that takes care of all the maintenance and the updates and the actual off-site backup information. So it is also an annual renewal in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. It is also budgeted item. We're asking for a recommendation to approve.
Do we have a motion on item twenty-six?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Science. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. President. Anything on reports? It is now seven twenty-four. We'll be heading into closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point oh seven-one. It is now seven forty-seven and we, we are out of executive session. And item A, do we have a motion?
I move, we approve item A as discussed in closed session.
We have a motion, item A. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Science. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item B? Motion, item B?
I move, we approve item D as discussed in closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item C? Do we have a motion, item C?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Science. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries and before we adjourn, oh, Mr. Dr. Salinas and his staff. oh, Mr. Dr. Salinas and his staff did advise me that this, this month, April the twenty-third, we'll be having, I believe it's the first five K for, within the district, and we encourage everybody to participate, all our faculty. I believe it's nearly twenty-five dollars per person, and for students, it'll be free. It'll be here at the fort, you know, I began my training yesterday, and we'll, we'll contain, we'll continue till the event. Also, meeting is adjourned, do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu, seven forty-nine, meeting is adjourned.
Special thanks for George. Joining. Honored with your presence. I hope I bring good luck to you.